Okay, welcome all to the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Long Range Planning Committee, when it's LRPC, and the zoning committee, ZOCO, the hybrid meeting on the sanitary sewer master plan update and the Plan Langston Boulevard General Land Use Plan that's the plan and zoning ordinance amendments. We will be holding a hybrid public meeting which enables remote electronic participation as legally authorized by the Code of Virginia per the Planning Commission's electronic meeting policy that was adopted on July seventh, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any planning commissioners, people at the table who are to be at the table who are participating remotely? If so, could you raise your virtual hand?
I don't see any.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Gilroy, I don't believe that's.
Okay, that's he's staff, okay, good. And if there's anybody on the phone, a planning commissioner who's on the phone, you can start six and say so now. Anyway, okay, the Planning Commission's committees, including the LRPC and ZOCO, provide comments to staff to help shape land use policies and zoning regulations prior to formal consideration and public hearings with the planning commission. For any final action on amendments to the county's general land use plan or zoning ordinance, the planning commission and the county board will each hold two public hearings. First round of hearings will set the scope of what amendments, what the amendments are advertised, and the second round will consider whether to adopt those amendments. At this time, I'd like to orient everyone to our hybrid environment and cover a few specifics about how tonight's meeting will be run. Tonight's agenda will consist of two separate meetings on the subject agenda items. First portion of the agenda will be dedicated to LRPC discussion of the sanitary sewer master plan update, followed by public comment for that agenda item. Once the public comment period is concluded, I'll adjourn that meeting. The second portion of the agenda will be dedicated to LRPC and ZOCO discussion on the Plan Langston Boulevard General Land Use Plan and zoning ordinance amendments, followed by public comment. That will be chaired by my fellow commissioner, Sarley, who is here next to me in person. Members of the public may attend the meeting here in person or electronically by using the Microsoft Teams link provided on the LRPC web pages, the county's events calendar, and the email notification sent to LRPC email subscribers. Additionally, there's a dial-in phone option for those who wish to use it. For our virtual attendees using Microsoft Teams, please turn off your video feed. I will address when it's appropriate to turn it on in a moment. The Microsoft Teams meeting chat is active to serve two purposes: for participants who need technical assistance, and for other attendees, for example, members of the public, to pose brief clarifying questions to the larger audience. While these will be monitored, they will not be formally acknowledged. The Teams chat should not be used for discussion or any inappropriate statements. Those who are planning to provide public comments will still need to do so at the end as the chat will not serve as that opportunity. As mentioned, there will be two periods of public comment tonight, which will follow after discussion of each agenda item. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony periods. I would also like to remind everyone in the room to speak up slowly and clearly and point to the microphones around us here, that's where we need to talk to. So everybody who is online will be able to hear us. In addition, if you'd like to share your screen, please request permission from the LRPC chair prior to doing so. Unlike the Planning Commission's regular meetings, the LRPC and ZOCO agenda items are not public hearings, and therefore, public comment is at the LRPC and the chair's discretion after the committee discussion has concluded. I am exercising the discretion, both of us are exercising that discretion, so there will be public comment at the end of each of these two agenda items. You will be called on at the end of the LRPC or ZOCO discussion to speak on each of tonight's agenda items. The speaking time allotted will depend on the number of speakers we have this evening. Maximum time will be two minutes. If there's a lot of people, it could be shorter. I will call the speakers at each agenda item, and I will ask the staff to let me know if we have any virtual attendees who'd like to provide comment. Staff will acknowledge speakers in the Teams chat. So please indicate in the chat if you'd like to provide comment in your name will be added to our list of speakers. Members of the public attending virtually will speak first, followed by in-person attendees. When virtual attendees are called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meetings, on the meeting command bar. Moderator does not have the ability to unmute you, but you will be muted when your time has concluded. As an alternative, public comment is available and may be provided on the public comment form posted on the LRPC and ZOCO web pages. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the campus website. All information associated with today's meeting, where the written spoken, is subject to the Freedom of Information Act requirements. Before we do anything further, why don't we go around the room and introduce ourselves?
My name's Lewis Sarley, I'm with the Planning Commission, and I am chair of the ZOCO.
And I'm Jim Lantelme, member of the Planning Commission, and I'm chairing the LRPC.
Kelly Brown, I'm a member of staff and comprehensive planning.
John Lawler, I'm chief support engineer at Watersworth Streets, I'm here to present the sanitary sewer master plan update. Eric Birkin, member of the.
Jerry Gower.
Ron Appleby, ZL principal trainer, CPHD.
And one of the other group of people who are pretty here.
Marsha Tric, UU CA of Arlington, voice.
Alice Tool, Clarin and Presbyterian, and with voice.
Jennifer Hockbone, Clarin and Presbyterian, also with voice.
I'm Tim Dugan, I'm a land use attorney with Bean Kenny and Corbin.
Joel in Pillsbury, Palisades Park and North Island.
Hi, Aaron Roberts, Palisades Park and North Island.
Nobody, how do you mind? Oh, I did. Okay, very good, that's done. Why don't we move on to our first agenda item, which is the sanitary sewer master plan. First thing we will do is have the staff discussion, so take it away.
Thanks, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm John Lawler, Chief Support Engineer at Watersworth Streets. Watersworth Streets, we're a bureau of DES in Arlington County, and we maintain, obviously, one thousand fifty-eight lane miles of streets, we maintain about four or four or three miles of sidewalks, storm sewer system, wastewater sewer system, and drinking water system. So I'll start by just explaining, you know, what is a sanitary sewer? Basically, all the water that goes down the drains in your house, the shower drain, the toilet, sinks, the appliances, like the washing machine, all that ends up, goes through your sanitary sewer lateral, out, connects to the sanitary sewer main, and then eventually it ends up at our water treatment plant down the South Lee Road near Four Mile Run. So basically, you know, all the water you use ends up with the sanitary sewer system. There's a lot of key differences between a sanitary sewer and storm sewer. You know, in Arlington, we do not have any combined sewer systems. All our sanitary is totally separate. Storm sewer only takes in the water, rainwater, runoff, and all that. Groundwater that keeps over. You know, like DC, Alexandria, they have a lot of sections where they combine sewer systems, that's why they have to build those massive tunnels underground that cost, you know, so we don't have any of those issues to build that stuff. Another key difference is just size. You know, our smallest and most normal sized sanitary sewers on inches diameter, whereas our smallest storm sewer system, or storm sewer that we maintain is about fifteen inches. So you might say, well, that's, sanitary sewer is about half the size of the storm, but that's actually not true, just based on like geometrics. The carrying capacity of fifteen inch pipe carries about five times what an eight inch pipe carries. So, you know, the storm sewer can carry a lot more flow than sanitary sewer. So sanitary is only really supposed to carry the, you know, what the residents. You know, another difference, storms are usually, storm sewers are usually more shallow, or sanitary sewers are much deeper in the roadway because we have to pick up basements, foundation drains, and things like that. So it really makes it, you know, much more complex than storm sewers because, you know, anytime you have to work deep underground, trench boxes, water work areas, sanitary sewer is also a lot of hazardous waste and, you know, gases inside them, so they're not, they're not fun to work in and stuff. You know, Arlington, the, you know, kind of the left you see from the house, there's that little pipe that goes out and connects to the big pipe in the road, so that's known as the sanitary sewer lateral. So Arlington County, that's privately owned and maintained by the residents. So if they have any issues in that lateral that cause them to back up, they have to hire a plumber, plumber comes, gets permit from the county, and fixes it and stuff. So we don't, we don't maintain sewer laterals. So some jurisdictions will have like a cleanout kind of sidewalk area, and that's where the public maintenance starts, but that's not. I know, you know, another thing to point out, there's no meter on a sanitary sewer. In Arlington, you know, meters, they really go wonky and stuff, so we built, you know, people's sewer usage is based on their winter quarter water usage, because we need water. And then unless, you know, let's say you lived in Maine over the summer and you didn't use any water, you would get billed based on the lower amount of water usage or your winter sanitary, or your winter waters. Because in the wintertime, you don't do irrigation, so. Yeah, just one other, you know, a couple other differences. Sanitary sewer pipes are usually made out of PVC, those are plastic pipes, those are resistant to corrosion, things like that, whereas storm sewers are usually reinforced concrete pipe. You know, but one similarity, sanitary and storm sewers, they go for a lot of gravity to do all the work. So gravity is great because it's free, and, you know, we don't need to pump it, use energy, doesn't cost any money, doesn't need maintenance, so. So basically, almost our entire collection system is. That's also why you'll find, you know, both of these, those sanitary sewers and storm sewers in people's backyards, rear yard, side yards, things like that. And, you know, we're in the conflict, sometimes people, you know, add additions to their properties, and the sanitary sewer, it's too close to it and all that, so. Explain that. I've been here tonight to present for the sanitary sewer master plan update, so I'll just kind of give you a background on the master plan, overview of our wastewater sewer system and our current programs, highlights of this current twenty twenty-three master plan update, and then summarize our action plan recommendations. This is one of the eleven elements of the county's comprehensive plan. I know there's soon to be a twelfth one coming up with the natural resources one. So, you know, basically, the comprehensive plan was established by the county board in nineteen sixty, originally consisted of five elements, and sanitary sewers were one of the five elements. You know, really, your, your ability to grow as a county depends on your sewer system and your water systems, which are critical utilities that, you know, can really constrain things if they're not planned properly. You know, so the, you know, basically, in Arlington, our sewer system began in nineteen thirty-three, when voters in November of that year voted on referendum, create a, you know, public county-wide sanitary sewer system. Prior to that, you just had a few private sewer systems spread out throughout the county, and people either had like septic tanks, or they had outhouses, or they just outfall private sewers and like streams, and things like that. And then in nineteen, the county basically built its whole network over about four years, and it built the treatment plant in nineteen thirty-seven, so the treatment plant opened in nineteen thirty-seven, so it's kind of the origins of our system. Sanitary sewer, like the slide of the comp plan, so it evaluates, the master plan evaluates the system facilities, practices, programs, policies, and improvements that we provide, maintain adequate service in the future. So the most recent update was adopted by the board in two thousand and two, so this is a planning level document, your primary goal is to be updating growth and development forecasts in the county, looking at our capacity assessments, make sure capacity sufficient to provide for the demands, identify where we need system improvements, then evaluate our ongoing rehab operations, maintenance efforts. So in our new master plan, these are our new goals and objectives. So overall goal is to guide future programs to maintain the gravity sewer system such that it continues to operate reliably and remains invaluable to the source of county residents. Our objectives are that, in the master plan, our objectives are that we describe the sanitary sewer collection system, we document the ongoing programs and improvements undertaken by the county to maintain and update the gravity sewer system to serve the needs of the residents and ensure continuous service, identify and address any portions of the gravity, gravity sanitary sewer system that do not have sufficient capacity for existing and projected future peak wastewater flow demands, recommend potential programs to address current or future capacity issues, backups and emergencies, optimize operation efficiency, and improve service reliability, recommend potential programs to maintain or reduce the rates of groundwater infiltration, storm water inflow entering the public and private sewers to reduce treatment and pumping costs, conserve capacity, and improve overall system performance, finally, recommend an action plan to improve the condition of the system and ensure that it operates effectively, safely, and efficiently. So I'll start by giving an overview of the sanitary sewer system, so it consists of four hundred fifty-nine miles of gravity sewers. You know, basically, a sewer, gravity sewer consists of a sewer main, and then it's connected on both sides by manholes, so we have about approximately fifteen thousand manholes. This is not part of the plan, we have fifteen sewer lift stations, and about four miles of force mains, a lift station is a, basically, a force main is a pressurized sewer that, you'll see a lot of those up by Military Road where you have these big hills up and down, so you can't, by gravity, you can't go up a hill, so you need to pump that to the hill, so that's what that is. Look at the map there, the Cyan area, that's, that's the section of Arlington County that is outfalls to DC Blue Plains Treatment Plant, so that's about one MGD a day goes over there. Blue Plains, that's located across from National Harbor, over at that southwest tip of DC. So there's all of DC brings all the way over there, we can just pay a fee for that. The orange areas are where Fairfax County Falls Church and Alexandria outfall to, outfall to Arlington County's wastewater treatment plant. So that's that magenta square at the very bottom, suburban tip of the county, over Route One, South Blue Moon Road, that area, Four Mile Run. So our partners are Fairfax County, we call them interjurisdictional partners, Fairfax County Falls Church and Alexandria. You know, there's a lot of, basically, the big area of Fairfax County that outfalls to Arlington is the Route Seven Quarter, or so, there's a lot of great growth potential there along between Bailey's Cross Road and Seven Corners, so they're always interested in, you know, purchasing new capacity and things like that. We have about thirty-seven thousand super building accounts. Let's see, there's only thirty-eight properties left in the county that may, that are, remain on septic tanks. Many of these really aren't possible to convert to the gravity sewer system just because of just the topography where they're located. A lot of them are right off that ridge of GW Parkway, and some of the largest houses in the county, so they would need to basically create private force mains to connect to our system. Let's talk a little bit about our organizational structure. Watersworth Streets, basically, the primary crews that maintain the system, we have four flushing crews, two sewer construction crews, and three CCTV crews, so that's basically what keeps our system going. The CCTV crews and sewer construction crews, they split their time between maintaining storm sewers and maintaining sanitary sewers, they're billed out accordingly and stuff. We have to augment our internal staff with contractors, we have a flushing contractor, a sewer repair contractor, and a sewer rehab contractor. And just in general, on the map there, for the non-Blue Plains area, like, you know, all that, like I said, all that drains down south, basically north to south, down into the square. You know, really, primarily, if you have three major interceptor sewers, you got the atomic interceptor that flows through the Spout Run Parkway, then down through Roslyn, underneath those buildings, and then down Arlington National Cemetery, or the, that goes down Armidade Drive, and then down South East, straight to the plant. It's a very large sewer, then you also have the Long Branch Relief Sewer, that's basically comes along Washington Boulevard, south Route Fifty, goes through Fort Meyer, and then ends up connecting down to the atomic interceptor. Then lastly, you have the Four Mile Run Relief, Four Mile Run Interceptor Sewers that just run basically all the way down Four Mile Run, all the way from East Falls Church down to the treatment plant. So those are kind of your, we call them, you know, sewers are kind of like roadway networks, we have arterial streets, collectors, and local streets, so. Then sewers, you have your, interceptors are your arterial sewers, trunk sewers are kind of your collectors, and then the sewer mains are your local ones. Basically, everything under fifteen, like eight inches to twelve inches in diameter, that's your local, fifteen inches up to like thirty inches, that's your trunk, and then everything above thirty inches diameter is interceptor. So talk about sources, common sources of sanitary sewer infiltration. This is really critical in sanitary sewers because they can, because like I mentioned, they're smaller than storm sewers, and they can get really overwhelmed if you have lots of storm water and groundwater infiltrating into them. So it's kind of, you know, this picture summarizes, the blue ones are inflow sources, so that's a lot of old nineteen thirties, forties, fifties houses in Arlington that have what's called foundation drain, and that's connected to their sewer lateral, so the foundation drains to keep groundwater from basically infiltrating into your basement. They don't, these houses don't have sun pumps, so that's what they used back then in those days. Nowadays, a new house without a sun pump, that's not connected to the sanitary lateral. You know, that sometimes you have people put illicit connections like roof drains that they plumb into the sanitary sewer system, well, we'll find those when we do our CCTV stuff. You might have uncapped cleanouts, or cleanouts with vents on them to try to relieve odors from the house, and then you also sometimes have faulty manhole covers and frames that aren't, you know, aren't watertight, or might have like a hole or two in them to get them open and things like that. That, all that allows storm water to flow into the system. There's one thing there, storm sewer cross connection, we don't, we don't have any of that. The infiltration sources, those are the green ones, broken wastewater laterals, so cracks in a lot of houses still their original lateral from when they were built, you know, eighty years ago, and so they have cracks in that, you know, groundwater is above the lateral line, all that groundwater is getting into our system. Tree roots are really problematic, they love to get into our system and drink that water and get the nutrients in there. Sometimes have faulty lateral connections at the main, a lot of our older pipe, the sewer mains in Arlington are concrete pipes, so they have, not, not perfectly watertight joints and stuff like that, all that allows groundwater seeping into the system and stuff, but you can also get a lot of infiltration at your manhole structures. But, you know, basically, HIIN, that, you know, it's a problem because when you have big rainstorms, then they can cause backups. Now I'll talk about kind of like the flow conditions in Arlington, so this line graph goes back to like July of nineteen eighty-nine, so you can kind of see our monthly flows at the water treatment pollution plant, and so you can see despite, you know, our population greatly increasing over this time, that, you know, the flows are generally going down in Arlington, so about, almost close to thirty MGD. Oh, basically, around thirty MGD back in the mid nineties, and now we're down to twenty-two, that's MGD is a billion gallons per day, so that's quite a bit of a big reduction, permitted for forty MGD, so we have lots of capacity there. We, you know, we began a really robust sewer line program in nineteen ninety-eight, that's intended to reduce that I and I was just talking about, and so we think that's also had a big impact on reducing flows to the water pollution control plant. As I mentioned earlier, that, that area in North Arlington that drains to Blue Plains, that's only one MGD, so that's, that's only about five percent of our total flow in Arlington. You know, it's a fairly large area, it's almost all just single-family houses, so there's not much sewer flow. And, you know, another reason the flows are decreasing is because water demand's decreasing. So here I have the map in the orange, the population based on the US Census, it was ten years cycles, and then in blue, that's our water demand. So we get all our water, it comes from the Washington Aqueduct, that's over on DeCarle Treatment, over in the very far northwest tip of DC, pretty high ground up there, so we buy all our water that, from them, and then they pump it to Arlington, and then it in our system. And so those, all those, all those data points, basically, that's our annually what we pay, what we buy from them, average per day. So you can see that basically, like, you know, steady decline in the water use, and a lot of that's based on those low flow fixtures like toilets, appliances, things like that. You know, basically, like ninety percent of the water you use. Evaporation, things like that, and then there's a few, you know, uses that do have more evaporation, breweries and cooling towers, but the most part, it, you know, it all just goes down the drain, so. Now I'll talk about our capital improvement plan. So from our most recent adopted ten-year CIP, which is FY twenty twenty-three, or twenty thirty-two, that's what we're in right now, so we're in FY twenty-four. You know, these are the budget, the ten-year budget figures for that. The overall utility, CIP, ten-year budget is about six hundred and seven million, six, six hundred and seventeen million dollars, so the, just the sanitary sewer portion's only sixty-five million dollars, so we're only about eleven percent of that overall budget. So I'll basically highlight maybe the big four programs, the INI, large diameter sewer rehab, sewer, sewer main replacement program, manhole rehab, our improvements for developer, for development, and sewer force main replacement was a much smaller program. The INI program, like I mentioned, you know, INI is a big concern for sewer systems because that, that's what, you know, could limit your capacity. So this, this program consists of re-lining, trenchlessly re-lining the sanitary sewer mains that are, are smaller diameter sanitary sewers, so the twelve inches, ten inches, eight inches sewer mains. So basically, with this, we put this flexible resident impregnated liner, put it into the existing pipe, and we heat it up with steam, hot water, then it hardens, and then that becomes a fully structural pipe within the existing pipe, and so the existing pipe could just wither away completely, deteriorate, that new pipe's perfect, and they're good. So this is a, this is a great technology, and it's, it's just really, you're basically replacing pipes, you know, fully replacing pipes with new structural pipes. And the map on the left, you know, everything in red is where we've already done this, so we've been doing it countywide. And so this, this technology, you know, it's only fifty years old, so people don't quite know how long it'll last, but all the ones that were done fifty years ago, like, began, like, are still doing just fine, and we've had great success with it, so. It's really like, you know, it doesn't, it's not intrusive really at all to the residents and everything, whereas if you were to actually dig up the road and replace the sewer main, that'd be very, you know, a couple weeks of, you know, parking restrictions, and lots of dirt and dust, because like I said, they're very deep, you know, very deep systems. So, you know, one nice thing about our, our INI program is reducing our overall pipe age, so, so much of our system was constructed in the nineteen thirties, forties, and fifties, almost like, I think, three quarters of it were constructed in those years, so, you know, by now, you know, that's going to be very old, but because we're rehabbing so many of these pipes, lining, you can see that, that darker blue line, how we're keeping the average pipe age way down, and then we're also just doing, you know, a couple percent per year so that we don't end up, oh, now we just did like half the county in one year, and then four years from now, we'd be kind of screwed and stuff, so. So we're nice, we're spacing it out really good, so to keep it, you know, well-maintainable in the future. And then we're basically attracting all the small diameter linings by twenty thirty-one, and that leaves larger diameter rehab, so that program focuses on pipes that are fifteen inch diameter and larger, so these are much more complex, they require these intricate sewer bypasses, that's what you see on the picture on the right, where we have a sewer bypass, the Four Mile Run Interceptor Sewer there that crosses the Four Mile Run Trail, so you have the trail temporarily elevated over the bypass, for the bypasses, these are just above ground, these pumps to keep the sewer flowing, because we got to get that, that pipe fully dry and cleaned out before we install that liner, so on the left, there's the, you know, the machine. So a large engine, the CIP program includes inspection and repairs. And sewer main replacement program, that's where we have to dig, do replacements, that's typically spot repairs or new mains to solve maybe certain like design issues. That includes our stub elimination program, a stub is where you have people connected upstream of a manhole, but there's no manhole upstream of them, so then there's no way to clean that line to serve those like properties, so. We've knocked out a whole bunch of those, but we're still down about three hundred percent left. You know, our minimum sewer diameter size is eight inches, but. You know, our minimum sewer diameter size is eight inches, but we still have some six inch mains throughout, throughout the county, so we're also. Process, this program addresses that, but upgrading those to eight inches, eight inches, you can't line a six inch sewer main, so eight inches. That's required, so that's another benefit to go to eight inches. Uh but yeah, sewer, um, you know, sewer main replacements are very challenging because they're just so deep underground. Uh that one, that middle picture in Sherlington, that sewer was about twenty four feet deep. Uh you can kind of see how the whole ground just kind of gave out when we were digging that far. You know, because there's all kinds of underground streams throughout the county that, you know, no doubt. You encounter, encountered a bird's nest of dry utilities when you're digging that deep. Those utilities, they have to deal with when you're laying these pipes, it's very challenging, a lot of specialized equipment. Um the last part I'll cover, that's our manhole rehab program. Uh you know, manholes are a great source of I N I. Uh so that picture on the left, you can see, uh, what's the gusher, that's basically just groundwater just shooting out through those. Uh exposed joints in that brick manhole. And so for our brick, or for our manhole rehab program, we just do a spray on epoxy. And then that, you know, kind of seals up all those voids and everything and rehabs the manhole so that the water can't intrude into it. Go over our, our preventive maintenance program, that's our, basically our, our biggest program for internal staff resources, so. Uh this is what we spend most of our time with. You know, we have four county crews dedicated to flushing sewer mains, so you know, flushing is really critical because. Most backups are caused because there's debris in the line and then, and then people's flow can't, can't get there, then the backs of the houses and all that, they call it county. Everything, so they go back out, flush the main and then fix the problem, so. These, these preventive maintenance areas, these are where we have to flush on a frequent cycle. And so the, you know, they're really made up of three, three programs, grease, trouble and tree root. Grease, those are all a one month, a three month cycle, trouble can be thirty, ninety, a hundred and eighty days. Tree roots aren't on a cycle, they're just on a five year cycle where. The ones with true reissues, first we basically take a root cutting nozzle, put it on our flushing. Our, our flusher, then we cut all the roots out of it and then we put a heavy foam into it and. Every five years, then we go back and apply that foam, that prevents the true roots from, or discourages them from getting into the sewer main. Best of that stuff. You know, the grease, that's obvious, that's just where you, you know, restaurants or caterers are dumping a bunch of grease down the, the drain and then, you know. It blocks up sewer mains, so we have to flush all that out and vacuum it. Uh troubles are usually where we have um four slopes, so if you, you just, if you don't have a steep enough slope for your sewer main. The solids can settle at the bottom and then that causes blockage. Uh so those, you know, those are ones that we have to flush for that, so here, here's some of the maps just to kind of illustrate the areas, so. The grease areas are primarily near Ross and the Boston corridor, Sherlington, Columbia pipe corridor. Cleveland Road corridor, anytime you have greasy restaurants, that's kind of where you find these. Um Arlington County passed a fats, oils and grease ordinance in January twenty twenty two. Uh so that's, I mean, it's, it's so new, but it seems like it's making it, right now we're just kind of getting off of the ground. All the restaurants have to register into this platform called Swift Comply and report their like grease traps and. Their inspections, things like that, and so hopefully that will help reduce these grease areas, but. And then you also see just kind of random red lines throughout the counties, on those we're investigating, trying to see. You know, which houses contributing this problem, because obviously it's somebody like, like a favorite business or something like that, it's houses. And then now we'll look at trouble, like I said, these are the ones with inadequate slopes, where you're just not getting that self cleansing philosophy. So they're just kind of spread out all throughout the county. And so, you know, by keeping these on our, you know, frequent cycle, we can back up spy services often. Our other major programs, a grid program. So basically, you know, we spend so much time on these uh preventive maintenance sewers that. Um we really don't have a lot of time to spend on the other sewers, unfortunately. Um so yeah, our goal is every five years to flush every twelve inch diameter and smaller sewer. At least once over that time, unfortunately about, over the last five years, about two thirds of the sewers we haven't even gotten to. Uh it's because we spend so much time on grease, uh trouble and stuff, so. Uh master plan really tried to figure out, okay, how can you, how can we start achieving this goal? And we basically need to, you know, adjust utility billing so that we can generate an extra three hundred and thirty thousand a year to. Basically give all these remaining segments to a contractor to use. Then the other picture on the, on the left, that's the S L rat. That's like a little tool that we use also to see, it will, it uses that acoustic signal that it sends. You put a upstream, downstream manholes and it sends that acoustic signal. And then that will give you a score and based on that score. You'll know if you need to flush it or not, so it'll, it'll, it just detects if there's a blockage in there, so you can use that to help you decide, well. Whether a line needs to be flushed or not, but downside to it is you also need traffic control because sewers are always typically in the middle of the ground and stuff, so you can't just. You know, have that sitting out there for five minutes, traffic, traffic to go and stuff. This, this exhibit uh shows the, or its sewer backups since nineteen ninety one, so you can see they're pretty cyclical. But they're, you know, overall, they're pretty low because, uh you know, based on national benchmarking standards. Good goal is to have a hundred and ninety three backups per thousand miles of sewer per year. Um that'd be considered very good, so if you adjust our, you know, remember we're four hundred and fifty nine miles. So that would be ninety two backups, thousand miles, therefore we're, you know, way under that, that benchmarking goal, though. I mean, it's been going pretty good. And then some of this is how like data has been reported by staff and turnover, it kind of changes a bit and stuff, so. Mostly these backups are from private side work. Uh asset management, that's really critical, public works departments, making sure you're, you're documenting all the assets you maintain and. When you're maintaining them, how much it costs you, uh keeping records, you know, all that stuff, and then. So we're, we're really national leaders in that front, we use this Cartograph Asset Management System, so all our sewer mains are in there. We track all our maintenance activities, um it has, when the install dates were, when they were relined, when they were retired. Uh when we flushed them, when we lined them, when we TV'd them, everything. Uh we, we track, you know, backups in here, everything else, so. Uh so for example, I click on a sewer main in the county and see the work history. And then also calculates like a, a life expectancy and you kind of prioritize your uh replacement program based on that. Uh we also use a, a program called I T Pipes, that's where we put all our CCTV footage. Uh so that sewer on the left, there, you can see that, that's a, that's one with the grease problem, you can see those grease marks after it was flushed. These are stains and stuff, so. Uh but yeah, and there you can see, um, you know, basically our operators, they use like an Xbox controller to move a crawler inside the pipe. And uh every time they see a defect, they take a picture of it. Make a note of it and decided to score and everything, so please, uh so all our C T, CCTV is electronically in there on the cloud and everything. And then it links up to Cartograph. And then so back to the master plan, I'll talk about. Uh you know, one of the big things is just making sure you have adequate capacity for future growth and development. So as part of our master plan, we, our consultant, you know, developed a dynamic sanitary sewer system model. Of all the county sewers, uh previously to that, about, we had a sewer CAD model of just the larger diameter sewers, so this was a big upgrade. So we can click on any sewer segment in the county and see the flow, the dry flow, the wet weather flow. You know, any type of flow like over the future conditions, existing conditions, so it's, it's really, uh, it's a really great, helpful software. Um to, to calibrate and generate the model, they did a lot of flow monitoring in twenty nineteen. As well as using the water bill and information from that period, it's the water bill and information that's used to generate the dry flows, so then what's, what's in your system during the operating event. And the, the flow monitor tells you how much like basically I N I you're getting in your system during these rainstorms. You know, the, the future conditions model, that's the twenty forty five future condition model. That's based on the C O G, that's Council of Governments, they publish it. You know, like a regional population land use model, so what we used was around nine point one. And so that has the population deployment figures for Arlington County that they project for twenty forty five based on all our approved. Uh land use documents and stuff, uh nearly a change we had to make was to add H Q two, so that was the plan. So based on like what happened during COVID, that's not a very conservative model, so, uh but still we used it in our offices. And then, you know, uh for the wet weather, that's kind of your peak condition for sanitary sewers, so. Uh for that, we use the ten year uh design storm for capacity planning. Uh it doesn't make any sense for it to go, some people say, why do you use a hundred year storm? And you know, all that extra water that you get there doesn't enter the san, sanitary sewer is a closed system, so it doesn't really. You know, just because you have those defects, it's cracks, it doesn't mean more water enters when you have higher artistic storms, so. Uh so here's a shot from our modeling software, it's called PC Swim. Uh so it's just kind of a shot of what it looks like, it's really easy to use, it gives you a lot of great information. Our, you know, the model found these really great results that county is like excellent in capacity, with tons of capacity. You know, probably because of all the, the decreased water use and all that over the, in the past thirty years. Uh but it showed especially past both the existing and future dry weather conditions, we only had one simulated overflow in the twenty forty five wet weather conditions. Overflow is when sewage would be shooting out the top of the manhole. And then we just had three surchargings, sewer segments, the twenty forty five wet weather conditions. But they still have more than one foot of reboard, so what that would mean is nobody would actually be backing up. Those three spots, uh because it would all be below the, the buildings are connecting to the pipe. Um so the, the, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about where the, the overflow symbol that. So that was on North Oakland Street, just south of North Glebe Road, that's, that's kind of where, um, that's like. Kind of up near Ethan Allen Pump Station off Military Road. Uh so that's where our Gulf Run Force Main outfalls into a happy sewer, so we actually have plans right now to. Upgrade that pipe so that we can resolve this issue, so that, that project will start construction um in spring in twenty point four. And you know, lastly, I'll summarize our, our action plan recommendations, so. You know, is there, you know, develop more detail in the actual plan document, uh but. Basically, we want to achieve that grid program, so we want to increase our, our operating funding by three hundred and thirty thousand a year to do that. We want to add, uh flushing all our fifteen inch, eighteen inch diameter sewers once every five years, that's actually not, for example, one thirty three thousand dollars a year. You know, our crews don't really touch anything larger than twelve inches because it's just, there's so much flow in there, there's, it's just so, it's. It's just very toxic and everything, so we use contractors to do the larger diameter stuff. Uh you really don't need to flush things larger than eighteen inches because there's just so much flow in it that keeps it clean. Unless you get some huge blockage or something, but um. And but the contractor has great equipment to flush the fifteen and eighteen inches and it's only thirty three thousand a year, so we thought that was a good thing to add. Uh we'd like to accelerate our large diameter inspection from two point one miles a year to four point four miles a year. Um just so we can, over the next twenty years, see all the many large diameter pipes that we haven't looked at. Uh large diameter inspection, you know, it's, it's, it's more difficult because there's so much flow in the pipe that you. Almost have to bypass it to get a good, a good shot of the pipe, but if you do it under flood, you're only going to see like half the pipes, you're going to miss a lot of defects and. Uh we'd like to implement a more robust manhole rehab program. We have a stream crossing inspection program right now that we look at stream crossings about once every ten years. Uh because you know, our sewer is drained by gravity, streams are the natural, like, that's, that's basically where gravity dictates, you know, water flow, so we have lots of. Sanitary sewers that are within stream crossings and stream areas, so it's important to, you know, keep inspecting those, make sure these exposed sewer pipes that you see in Gulf Run that. You know, they're not leaking or any kind of risk or anything. Uh we'd like to have more overflow reporting where we just have kind of standardized reporting. So that, you know, when their staff changes, that it doesn't change if numbers that overflow is just a consistent amount. You know, periodically update design standards. You know, we, we're already doing that, our most recent standard update was just to require a tracer wire on. House laterals so that, you know, sometimes, um, you know, contractors with the AT and T. Uh five G fiber on the sidewalk, they might hit like somebody's sanitary ladder and break it, but that's because it's not registered with this utility, so. But they have the tracer wire on it, they would, the contractor for these communication companies would see it. And that would, uh you know, avoid that less, that, that's our most, that's kind of example of our most recent standard update, so continue doing things like that. Uh continue enforcement of the fats, oils and grease program and update that accordingly as we. That, you know, as it gets older and stuff, uh then just update the master plan again in twenty thirty three, which should be ten years from now. Or you know, really our next steps are to hopefully do the request to advertise here in this fall and then go to the county. Adoption at the December sixteen meeting. You can provide comments on the sanitary sewer master plan by going to the below, or you can just Google Arlington County sanitary sewer master plan and it'll just take you right there. Uh then you can just email me your comments at jlawler@arnet county dot com. If you got any questions about.
Thank you very much, since now with um. Do any of the. Just have any questions or comments about the master plan? I have a couple of. Glad to see that you're now telling the story about our capacity and the plan for the future on this. My takeaway of this, you can tell me if I'm misreading it, is that at least in twenty forty five. Both our sewer system and our sewer treatment plant have more than enough capacity for the expected growth, population growth.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, um that our sewer system itself is in pretty good shape. That we've actually been renewing it over the past number of years so that. The large majority of sewer lines have been effectively, they're effectively new.
Yep.
Okay, good, that's good to know. So. Now, I've also noticed, when I like go down four mile run on my trail. That after the various storms, more and more of the pipes are exposed, are those sanitary sewer pipes or are those storm sewer pipes?
Which part of four mile run are you on?
Um South Arlington.
Okay, um, those are, those are usually probably sanitary sewer ones, um but. Yeah, we have a lot of manholes like in the, some parts of like the older trails and stuff.
But I can see the, it's a column with a manhole on top.
Yeah.
Are you monitoring those to make sure the erosion doesn't end up breaking them?
Yep, yeah, we, we monitor that, we have one where like a, a tree thought on it damaged it. We continually monitor this.
Because I think they've also been like on Donald Saran, some of them were exposed also.
Yeah, it just says they're exposed, doesn't mean, you know, there's going to be an accident, but typically what we're doing on Donald Saran, we're casing it exposed on the concrete. Donald Saran, they're doing like a stream restoration project to kind of.
And back to what, so it's pretty clear that water usage, well, this work capacity, what goes into the sewers just depend on the amount of water. That people use, that people use in their offices, homes, schools, those sorts of things.
Yep.
It's the clean water that pumped in that ends up mostly, not entirely, mostly going into sewers. So it is more population dependent than building, it's people dependent on how much water is being.
Yeah.
For the, that goes into sanitary sewers, and it's not really whether for the most part.
Um, yeah, no, because yeah, just in the summers, people wanted a lot of that.
Okay, um and again, that gets back to, um, given that. Capital use of water has been trending downward pretty consistently, for how many years, twenty years now, ten years?
Um, I mean, roughly, I would say maybe a long, but definitely like over the last thirty years.
Thirty, so it's been quite a long time, and that's continuing to drop.
Yep.
Okay, so even though our population is increasing, our water use is decreasing, which means we still have. That opens up capacity.
Yep.
And that story is continuing, looks like it, you don't see a reason for that to, to stop.
No, but you know, on the flip side though, you know, it costs us a same amount of money to maintain the system. Yeah, so you know, it's great, people are concerned with water and, and all that, but then it kind of impacts the building.
Well, I'm, I'm doing more in, the reason I'm asking this is that we do get concerns. We've heard in any number of things with E H O, with uh Lake to Boulevard, with individual projects that. Are we sure we went into this, should we do a study to see that we have capacity? Well, the point is you have done those studies, so that's what you're talking about here, is that you have done countywide studies. That show we have capacity, and that we actually have more capacity today than we did twenty years ago, so to a certain extent.
Yep.
Um so our anticipated growth for any of these sources of growth. Will be accommodated by, at least by our water and sewer systems.
Yeah, that's correct, and I mean, in Lake Boulevard, that's split in so many different sewer sheds, you know, what part of that quarter you are, that, that's one of the reasons it's not a. Capacity issue with increased density along the whole quarter because it doesn't just flow like west to east or it's split in so many different areas, so. Uh you know, has very minimal impact. Then E H Os, I mean, we would love to. Then EHOs, I mean, we would love to, you know, have more customers to, you know, buy into our system and spread our project risk and stuff.
Very good, um, those are my questions, um, yes.
I mean, I just appreciate the presentation and how several of these fixes are pretty low cost to the county. And I don't really have any questions, I just, I appreciate all the information, I really learned a lot.
I had a quick question.
No, go ahead.
So that, if that day said about a year ago where a pipe broke. How do you, is that essentially like citizen dependent to alert you?
That one was, somebody was, it was off like one of the, like the wooden bridges on the, uh, at, at that point, it's the W O D trail, but, um, I think it was between like. It's just north of like Columbia Pike, um, just at like north of Sparrow Pond, you know, um. Yeah, somebody saw like a tree leaning on a manhole, and they took a picture and sent it to us, and so. Yeah, I kind of like, you know, if you see any sort of sewer issue that looks like, or like water coming out of the street. Um, you know, you're supposed to call seven oh three two two eight six five five five, and then that's how you can report to us, but, um. Yeah, for like the W O D trail, like. Sometimes people are the first ones, because that trail is.
Yeah, I, I actually, the cost seems quite modest for the size of this county, and what we're getting. There's a lot of negative book for that sewer rehab project and manhole projects and all of those. Kudos. That is working. Okay, uh, any further questions on this? Thank you, we look forward to hearing you at the.
Thanks.
And that conclude, oh, do we have any public comments for this sanitary sewer? Portion of the L R P C. Do we have anybody signed up on the chat? As there's nobody in here who's looking.
Someone has their hand raised.
Someone has a hand raised. Without a name.
I don't know.
Okay, well, um, since I haven't heard from anybody otherwise, and no one has signed up, um, I declare the sanitary sewer L R P C closed. Adjourned, we'll now turn the meeting over to Commissioner Shawley for the Plan Langston Boulevard portion of. This meeting, um, before you start, though, I do want to note that, um. I am president of Langston Boulevard Alliance, I'm also a planning commissioner, I'm here tonight as a planning commissioner. Any comments that I make tonight will be as a planning commissioner and not in my capacity. For Langston Boulevard Alliance.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you, John, for the great presentation, that's very thorough, um, we didn't have any questions, so. Um, with that, I think now we roll into so code, I'm not going to be doing introductions and or any preamble, so, um, I will hand it over to Steph for their presentation.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Kelly Brown, and, um, I am a, uh, section supervisor in the comprehensive planning group in the planning division here in Arlington County. And, um, I've been supporting the, um, Langston Boulevard planning process. During the entirety of the, the planning process, um, I today, trying to, I'm here to, um. Present staff's considerations and recommendations. For general land use plan amendments, master transportation plan amendments, zoning warrants amendments. As implementation items, um, for the adoption, uh, that would go along with the adoption of the Langston Boulevard area plan this fall. Um, so I will provide, um, an overview, some background on the planning context for Langston Boulevard tonight. Um, I will present the general land use plan amendments, master transportation plan. And zoning warrants amendments that we're recommending, um, I will walk through some, um. Next steps, some, uh, follow on work we're recommending. So as I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, we have been looking at the Langston Boulevard corridor. Over the course of several years, um, to develop a new plan for the corridor, um, this is the entirety of the planning area. Shaded in dark gray, um, with the distinct neighborhood areas, um, indicated, um, in these boxes on the screen. And, um, we have been in this planning process for several years, we are drawing near to the end, at the end of phase three, drafting the plan. Um, and really moving into refining the plan and, um, recommending plan adoption. Um, which also, um, is recommended to include certain implementation items to allow for the plan vision to be realized. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. The planning process has resulted in a, um, a planned vision that's being recommended in the plan. You don't necessarily need to go through all, you know, all of this material, I think it's been presented in the past at different L R P C meetings and in the draft plan, um, but I did just want to, um. You know, mention it tonight, that it's really anchoring, um, what we're recommending in terms of general land use plan amendments. Sustainability, environmental, environmental resilience and equity at its foundation. There's also, um, policies and recommendations in the plan in distinct, um, issue areas, land use, economic vitality, housing, public schools and facilities. Building form, historic and cultural resources, and then, uh, with regards to the public realm, transportation connectivity and urban design, public spaces. And sustainability and resiliency, the plan also includes design guidelines, um, and principles. That, um, should, should guide, um, future reinvestment on the court. So the plan, um, does have specific goals, um. For each of those topic areas, there's a specific goal for land use to transform the corridor into a vibrant green multimodal main street. For expanded land uses, density, um, there are goals for housing to expand equal housing choices. Goals for built form and height. Goals for transportation connectivity and urban design. Really transforming the corridor into a complete street that connects with the surrounding neighborhoods and increasing transit use. Goals for the public space network, um, to ensure that the community is connected to and well served by a diverse mix of public spaces, balancing community needs. And goals, uh, for sustainability and resiliency, also within the, the theme of creating a green corridor. And meeting goals for conserving the unexpanding tree canopy, reducing energy use and emissions, and managing stormwater and voting water quality. So the, the implementation items that we're here to talk about tonight, um, are really intended to communicate the new planning vision for the Langston Boulevard corridor. And the, the, the goal, the, the, the policies and recommendations. On the general land use plan, or in the general land use plan and the master transportation plan. And then, um, secondly, to amend the zoning ordinance to encourage reinvestment consistent with the plan vision involves. And the, the focus of these, these recommendations is within the core study area, which is the area identified in the plan. As recommended for change over time. And where the, the plan vision and the, and the goals. Are swapped. So as we, um, look specifically at the general land use plan amendments, they, they fall into four main categories that we're recommending. Um, the first would be, um, adding a new Langston Boulevard planning district to the general land use plan. Um, and this would, as I mentioned before, encompass all areas with a new planning vision. Both the mixed use district and the residential district as they've been identified in the plan. And this would be accompanied by new, um, text in the general language booklet, articulating the vision and the goals, uh, for this area. We are also recommending to add Langston Boulevard as a planning order to the back of the, the, the GLUT map. As, as a, as a fourth planning corridor, um, in the county. And the second category of amendments would be adding open space triangles, um, to identify the locations of all planned open spaces. The third category is to remove the housing conservation district designations that currently exist on the corridor, where there's overlap with the new Langston Boulevard district. And the purpose of this, uh, change would be really to help clarify the plan goals for these areas. That we are seeking to maintain, these existing residential nature, but promoting increased density to expand housing choices, increase supply. Increase committed affordable units, and also achieve other plan goals. And then finally, we are recommending to adjust the Cherrydale revitalization district, consistent with guidance, um. That came about during approval of expanded housing options, so we are not studying Cherrydale, um, as part of this planning process, but through EHO. There were recommendations for a very targeted change, um, to remove certain parcels from the Cherrydale revitalization district to allow for expanded housing options. And, um, just to provide a little bit more detail on that, um, specific recommendation. Expanded housing options is not permitted within, um, landing districts identified on the general land use plan, and that. Was really intended during EHO to, um, allow those planning districts to continue. To be focused on achieving the plan goals in those area plans. And have expanded housing options be a new option in the area, in, in all other, uh, lower density residential areas. Um, during the expanded housing options approval process, um, certain parcels. Were identified, uh, within the Cherrydale revitalization district, where change is really unlikely to occur, given adjacent mixed use redevelopment. And, um, EHO may be a preferred choice, uh, for those, for those homeowners for reinvestment. Um, and so there was a recommendation during EHO to study and propose changes through Plan Langston Boulevard. To, um, to really address that issue, and so, um, consistent with that, that, um, that recommendation in EHO. Staff did take a closer look at the Cherrydale revitalization district. And has identified eighteen parcels where it would be appropriate to remove them from the Cherrydale revitalization district, because they are adjacent to areas where. Redevelopment has already occurred, additional change is unlikely, and so this, removing them from the district would then allow for. So these, um, are the maps that we would recommend, um, we would request to advertise. Um, as changes to the general land use plan, uh, with plan adoption, and, um. They indicate in red the location of the new Langston Boulevard planning district, um, the addition of, um, public space, um. The general occasions for public space, the, the black triangles, and then the removal of the housing conservation district planning districts. Um, that are outlined in black on, on these maps, and, and those are proposed to be removed. And this is for, it's a very long corridor, so we kind of divided it up over three areas, um, on that side, and then. Um, area five west and area five east on this slide, um, again, these areas show, um, in red, the. Proposed addition of a planning district in Langston Boulevard, addition of open space triangles, and removal of housing conservation district areas that overlap with the new planning district. The next part of the presentation, uh, covers our master transportation plan amendments that we're recommending, and Kristin, uh, Hawkins from, uh. DS Transportation is, is going to cover these slides.
Hi, everyone. Um, Kristen Colgan, as introduced, um, so we're going to be making some modifications to the, um, M T P. Oh, as well to support the, and integrate the recommendations that have been made in Plan Langston Boulevard. The first, um, is related to the M T P map and areas planned for new streets. Um, we're going to represent areas on the map that show kind of that we want to see a new grid created in our, in our activity areas for the plan. The second is for areas where we're planning bike lanes on Langston Boulevard, where we hadn't in the past. Those are on two different segments, um, one is from North Quincy Street, Military Road, to Old Dominion Drive, North Cole Pepper, uh, sorry. From, yeah. Nope, that is not right, uh, my apologies, um, one is from North Quincy Street to Old Dominion, and then the other is from North, North Cole Pepper to North Langston. North Lexington, um, those are places where in our cross sections, we think there's space, there's room. One, um, through just repainting and reconstruction of the roadway and its existing right of way, the other through expansion of the right of way through redevelopment. For bike lanes to be accommodated, if we want to move to the next slide, we can show what the draft versions of these maps look like. So, um, on this zoom in, you can see that we have the areas in hatching here, these are the areas that we anticipate new streets will be, um. Implemented through new development, one of the things we're not doing is we are not putting those new streets on this map, so there are no planned streets shown on this map, we want the ability to. Look at the plan for guidance, but to have the flexibility when development comes in to make sure that we're making streets work. Uh, for the time and place that we're in, um, through that review process. Uh, and then the next slide will show where we're adding additional bike lanes, so. I'm not driving, but if you can take a look at the map, you'll see between that, that, that new hatching between North Quincy. And Old Dominion, and then you can't even see where the new hatching starts, but at North Cole Pepper to North Lexington, um, the, the dotted bike lanes have. Extended for the recommendation on the map.
Thanks, Kristen. So this last category of implementation recommendations is for zoning warrants amendments, and, um. With plan adoption, we're, we're recommending two zoning warrants amendments, the first is to permit townhouses by site plan only. In the RA fourteen twenty-six, RA eight eighteen, and RA six fifteen zoning districts in the Langston Boulevard planning district. And the reason for this is that townhouses are currently permitted by site plan only in housing conservation district areas. That is to encourage the conservation of existing multifamily housing in those areas. When we remove the housing conservation district areas within the Langston Boulevard planning district, townhouses. With no other actions would become a by right use again. And, um, staff is recommending this, this, the zoning warrants amendment to. Reinstate that site plan only, uh, permission for townhouses, because townhouses by site plan only. Would limit forms of development inconsistent with plan goals, um, better achieved through multifamily housing. So, uh, moderate to higher levels of residential density really helps support urban and pedestrian oriented streetscapes. Consolidated public open space and a coordinated multimodal plan street grid. Um, the second zoning warrants amendment is, um, that we're recommending at this time is to amend the preamble to the CO two point five district. And, um, that's really only to clarify its application, um, it, right now, the, the zoning ordinance indicates that this district is appropriate in metro transit corridors. Um, and we are recommending to revise that to say planning districts, so. Its application is broader and consistent with actually how it's currently used, and how we anticipate that, that zoning district may be. May be, uh, utilized on Langston Boulevard in, into the future. Um, so, before we conclude, there are a few items that are still to be addressed, um, as we think about, look, M T P and zoning warrants amendments. The, uh. The, the first item to highlight is the, the need to consider the appropriate GLUT designations and zoning tools that would best meet the plan goals. So right now, the, the, the existing, uh, general land use plan designations don't support. The, the building heights and the densities and the plan goals that are recommended in the plan. So you generally explain designations would be appropriate to, to, um. Allow for that plan vision to be realized, and so there's several considerations that, that staff is, is looking at as we. Identify, you know, what would be appropriate for future general land use amendments, the first is, you know, what are the general land use designations that best communicate the future vision? For plan goals in mixed use, in the mixed use district and residential district areas. Uh, we also want, um, general land use plan designations to set clear expectations for appropriate zoning districts. The application processes, whether that's a use permit or a site plan, that should be used when reinvestment is set. And also expectations and opportunities for, to, to, uh, realize base and bonus density to achieve plan goals. We're also looking at the designations that best, um, maintain affordability in areas of existing market rate affordable units, which we. in areas of existing market rate affordable units, which we refer to as MARCS, yet also provide sufficient incentives to create committed affordable units to replace MARCS. And finally, we're looking at designations that really correspond with existing zoning districts to the extent practical. So looking to really use zoning districts that already exist rather than needing to create a new zoning district as we have done in other areas. Acknowledging, however, that we may need to create some new or adapt some existing zoning tools in some limited circumstances, particularly, for example, in areas of lesser change where a new use permit tool, rather than site plan only, may be appropriate to support reinvestment. So with those considerations in mind, the designations that we're looking at vary by the degree of change that's anticipated in these areas. In areas of greatest change, both in a mixed-use district and a residential district, we're looking at medium OAH, but we're also looking at low OAH in the mixed-use district areas and high-medium residential, medium residential as well in residential districts. In areas of lesser change, we're looking at low OAH, service commercial, or potentially no change at all. And that's in the mixed-use districts. In the residential districts, we're looking in the areas of lesser change at potentially low-medium residential, medium residential, or low OAH. So there's lots of options on the table of really evaluating the pros and cons of each. Also important to mention at this time is that we're not considering proactive GLUP amendments, so we're not recommending at this time to change the GLUP amendments. And this is really given zoning ordinance affordable housing expectations associated with applicant-initiated GLUP amendments. However, we are considering the creation of a future GLUP map within the final area plan to help establish expectations for private property owners in terms of what would be appropriate GLUP amendments to request with redevelopment application. In terms of new zoning tools, and I alluded to this when I was talking about GLUP designations on the previous slide, these are also still under consideration and something that we would study after plan adoption. The first is the creation of a new use permit tool for areas of lesser change to facilitate reinvestment. We're also going to recommend looking at opportunities to facilitate near-term interior alterations and expansions, identifying if there's barriers in the zoning ordinance that hinder that sort of reinvestment. And then there may also be some additional amendments that we need to pursue depending on final GLUP designation recommendations. So in terms of next steps, we are going to recommend bringing forward an initial package of amendments with plan adoption. And those are the ones that we presented tonight for the GLUP, the MTP and zoning ordinance. And then we are going to continue setting GLUP designations in appropriate zoning districts. And there is potential for a recommended future GLUP map with plan adoption. And new zoning tools, however, will be recommended for additional study after plan adoption as a near-term implementation item. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Calkins, for the presentation. Yes, now it's with the committee. Any questions or comments?
Plenty, but go ahead.
No, why don't you start?
Well, okay, and I'll preface this with saying is that recently newly appointed member of the planning commission. But Kelly, so the last point you were just making about not making a lot of these GLUP designations. So can you walk me through that? So I'm thinking about the plan, I'm thinking about what is actually going to be in the RTA here. So like, again, this is sort of a layman's question, but like, thinking about these different districts then, if we're not going to be making GLUP changes, then, you know, are these, what we have on the map and the proposed plan, like, are we locked into some of these building heights and some of what's on the map? Like, how does that, how does that work?
So the plan will provide the guidance for what's appropriate. And the plan will also have a GLUP map in it that reflects what in the future we think would be appropriate. So when applicants come forward with proposals for redevelopment or reinvestment, the plan would provide the guidance for what is the maximum allowable height, what sort of densities are appropriate, what are the plan goals we're trying to achieve in terms of housing, open space, and what are the GLUP designations and zoning districts that we think would be appropriate to request with your redevelopment application?
But we're not making the changes now because we want to maintain flexibility?
There is an expectation in the zoning ordinance that there are contributions to affordable housing with a change in a general land use plan designation. So.
I sort of want to preface this first because what we're talking about here is something that will be going forward for the request to advertise, the RTA, which means that what we're talking about is what is the outer limit of what will be, what the county board will be allowed to consider that they could recommend something less than what is in, but they can't go beyond that. Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that is generally yes.
We probably would have to, you know, fully consult with the county attorney's office on that question.
On specific things, but in general, this is the way RTA works.
In general, but I think that we would always want to double-check with the county attorney's office to confirm, you know, which perspective is considered outer limit.
Right, as I said, some things, we're not quite sure what, how that would work. So yes, I appreciate your caveat on that. Where we say we're going to be looking like CO 2.5, we're going to be defining that as being this corridor would also be allowed to use the CO 2.5. That means that for RTA purposes, could we then later on consider creating a new CO Langston Boulevard that we have CO Roslin, CO Crystal City?
If that was something that we wanted to recommend, we would need to bring that forward as a specific request for advertise.
Okay, so right now, we're deciding that CO 2.5 is our outer limit consideration.
Well, at the moment, we're not recommending any general land use plan amendments. We are potentially going to be recommending a, what could be appropriate designations for an applicant, you know, a private property owner to request as a change. So we're not really locking ourselves into anything. We're just kind of recommending what we think would probably be appropriate in the future. And if an applicant could come forward with something different, it's really the plan, I think, that would be providing the policy guidance for the board to consider.
Yeah, and just to go back to one of the things that you showed on the last slide, in the areas of greatest change, where we are looking at heights, you had it seven to up to 15 stories. There is potential for medium office apartment hotel, but there's also potential for high-medium residential. So that comes, you know, at a density level greater than the medium office apartment hotel, which is tied to CO 2.5. So again, I don't think that we are at a fully solidified recommendation at this point, and we're trying to move forward.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we're not locking ourselves in that CO 2.5 is the max. Okay, thank you. You mentioned heights also. The heights that then are mentioned in this are those also the outer limit for heights at various spots along the corridor for RTA purposes?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so we say in some spots it's five to seven. That's seven is the max under the RTA that we then could not say, oh, with bonus, you can go up to 10.
Well, I think we've been pretty clear with the community that we are establishing a heights map that we see as the appropriate height maximums in the corridor. But I think it's important for us to communicate here tonight and as we move forward, as we have this conversation, that the board has the ability to deviate from the heights as this is just policy guidance. And at the moment, we are not intending to bring forward any zoning regulations that would in fact codify these heights in a way that the board would lose that ability to, you know, in extraordinary circumstances, to consider additional height. But again, what we've communicated to the community is that we, our recommendation is these are the maximum heights.
Okay, but the county board can also decide that it wanted to limit itself if it so chose. The way I think we have in Courthouse, there are certain hard caps that even the county board has decided it cannot then break through.
That's correct.
So that is still an option.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We mentioned TDRs in here, which is great, and the staff report is very happy to see that. Could we, and we list a number of reasons that TDRs could be used. Could we have beyond those mentioned? Would we be limited to TDRs to those things that are mentioned? Or could there be other uses such as open space? TDRs.
We've identified study of potential for transfer development rights as something, a future, an area of future study. We're not going to be bringing forward any specific recommendations related to TBR. So that's, that's certainly, we're not limited at this time.
Okay, that's good. Again, what I'm trying to raise here is for RTA purposes, if we have a full understanding that where we're limited and where we're not. So that's good to know, it's our flexibility there. Thank you. Ms. Calkins, are you still there? I have a couple of questions for you.
I'm here.
Okay, great. First off, Langston Boulevard between, essentially between Roslin and Spout Run are I-66. Is there provision for bike facilities along that wide part of Langston Boulevard on the MTP?
So that is, if someone can pull up, and I'm trying to pull it up on my screen, before I say something that I need to double-check, there are already bike lanes planned on Langston Boulevard along that segment.
Right, minority is one.
If you take a, if you zoom in on this slide, you can see that there are already the blue hashed lines on Langston Boulevard there that are included in the map.
Great, thank you. That's good to know. Because I wanted to make sure that we still weren't taking advantage of that extra right-of-way there. When you mentioned the other ones being added, those two other sections, which again, I support. I think it's a good idea. Are we talking about simple stripes on the road, the way we have in Cherrydale? Or are we looking at some sort of separated?
So the map itself here is not that prescriptive. It just says that we're doing en route bike lanes. That's something that through the design process, we have cross-sections in Langston Boulevard that we're recommending, but the map itself is not that prescription. It gives us the, the bike lanes are planned here. And in the future, we get the opportunity to implement bike lanes because of that on a feed-up facility.
Great, thank you very much. For the cross-hatched areas, which again, I think this is a good idea. I like, I like seeing those. Within the draft plan itself, we have shown certain areas that would, where streets could go or would go. The cross-hatch does not, clearly does not mandate those be in those spots. So we can be comfortable in saying that the draft plan, by showing those routes, those are one possible option, but not a requirement that they be located where they are. So for RTA purposes, they could, this is considered a minimum, but we could, in the future, put those streets somewhere else or not put them depending on what plans come forward and what makes sense for that particular site.
Yes, DS's perspective is that by not prescribing streets, we actually give ourselves the most amount of flexibility in the future.
Great, thank you. That's, that's good to know. So that's also the answer I was looking for. So thank you very much. Let me see, I just want to confirm what we were saying, that with the MARCS, by saying site plan only, that that will then lock us for RTA purposes into site plan for townhouses where there are some. Yes, Housing Conservation.
So right now, in Housing Conservation District areas, townhouses are permitted by site plan only. What we are recommending is the removal of those HCD areas because the guidance for Langston Boulevard is kind of superseding the previous guidance for those areas. Yet we still believe that townhouses by site plan only is the best choice for this, for this planning area because townhouses are, by right, townhouses would not allow us to achieve our plan goals for this area. It would limit our ability to get coordinated open spaces, you know, urban street fronts, and a form of development that just really meets our plan goals.
Good, I want to make sure that everybody understands how that works. And turning to Cherrydale, those few sites in there. Under the current Cherrydale area plan, those sites could have been redeveloped into something way more dense than what's on there now. Is that correct?
Yes.
So by our, actually by our removing them, we are allowing more density that, actually, would be somewhat less density than what could have been built there anyway, under the Cherrydale District, by even allowing EHO, which is what we're doing. We could then allow more density there, but less than what otherwise would have occurred in the Cherrydale Revitalization District theoretically. Good, I just want clarification on that. So good, that's good to know. Right now, that's what I'm thinking right now, so.
I mean, I'll, I just, you know, associate myself with the sentiment of retaining the site plans for these three districts that you mentioned, Kelly. I think that that's right. I think, I think it still aligns with what we were thinking back in 2017 when those districts, the district was established. So I think that's sort of the way to go. I also think that we need to be thinking about ways to maintain, you know, some of what we already have there. And so that it does make it a little bit more difficult if it's going to be site plan only for redevelopment. We thought about that on Columbia Pike as well, you know, cabs are important. But, you know, we're thinking about housing, especially affordable housing. It's much easier to preserve sort of what you have, you know, if it's, you know, working. One question I do have is, in one of the implementation strategies, you talked about a special exception applicable process in areas of lesser change up to five to six stories. So I just have a general question there, which is I know that, you know, some folks along the corridor are sort of concerned about legacy businesses or concerned about some of those areas where, you know, retail is. Are we, are we concerned that if we basically provided a streamlined process? Maybe we're not concerned, maybe it's a different policy goal. But, you know, I'm not sure everybody necessarily wants to see those shopping centers immediately turn over. So are we worried about maybe by making it a little bit easier through a streamlined site plan or a use permit, that we might kind of turbocharge some redevelopment there? Or maybe some folks wouldn't necessarily want to see that happen? It is a big question.
Really? I didn't break you on that one.
What this plan is offering is a variety of choices. And it's not just a one-size-fits-all for redevelopment. And whether that's in the multifamily area or the commercial area, getting to a place where even renovation, infill, building expansion is possible. But let's do it in a way that's not just through the result of what the byright development option, you know, would allow. So would we start to see some transformation of the corridor? And some would say, you know, let's, you know, keep everything as is. I'm sure that certainly will be a sentiment of some. But I think that to fulfill the multimodal vision and trying to expand access for all modes of travel to bring more households and residents to the community that can help support some of those businesses in their existing form or possibly if they find a new shop front. I think, you know, those are the objectives that we see as possible and still would seem positive.
Yeah, part of my understanding, being involved in this for over 10 years now, is that we have a lot of very small holdings up and down the corridor. And going through site plan to develop a very small site just doesn't make any sense. Most property owners just won't do it. If we want to get some of the benefits we'd like to get from this, the only way to do it is by incentivizing property owners to go ahead and redevelop their properties in some form. Site plan is tough. I think what we had been advocating as a community was can we find a way to allow this that is less expensive for the smaller holders? Site plan is tough, and I think what we had been advocating as a community was, can we find a way to allow this that is less expensive for the smaller holders? Where we can't have consolidation lots that make it viable, but if it's small, is there some other way to? I don't know whether there's an answer for that, I think that's what staff is wrestling with.
Sure. I'm going to bring it up because I don't, I'm not putting my thumb on the scale, I'm just even struggling with it. Because I think, you know, Jen put it well, it's, it's, it's this idea of folks wanting a corridor that has a certain vision, but in order to do that, change has to occur, and change is hard, and changes ultimately going to mean certain things come and go, and so that's.
Yep.
You know.
And one of the realities that occur here is, we have great retail up and down it, but a lot of them are small businesses or individually owned businesses, and a lot of them are reaching the point where a lot of those, those priors are wanting to turn the reins over.
Right.
Don't have anybody who's willing to, to take it on. We give.
So like.
It's going to, the point is, it's going to be changed no matter what.
Sure, I mean, I, so this is something that you all are going to look at, you know, so you don't have anything fully baked, but, you know, when I look at like streamlined site plan use per, I think of like maybe mini form-based code kind of thing, something predictable, if it's like less than five or six stories that come in, you're, you're, you're trying to give predictability, I guess is what I'm saying. And to reduce these soft costs for, so.
Yeah, we're not wedded to a fully administrative process.
Sure.
For, for a variety of reasons, but, you know, every site's different, the conditions may not meet a level of precision that's required with administrative regulations, so therefore they may come to the county board needing modification, and I think that, you know, that some level of community review or input into applications is still a worthy objective, so we've got a number of tools, you know, that are lighter, but they still require an application process, a review process, and what we're indicating is a public hearing process. So I, I think that that will, in exchange for some of the things that meet the plan goals, like the building in the right place, you know, our thoughts around parking and some of the public improvements, and I think that will spur change, but it will rapidly spur change, you know, probably, probably not, because it's still a very challenging process to, you know, to decide to make those change, and you think about that level of coordination with your neighboring properties as well.
Sure.
I appreciate that. Do you have another question? The map of area. We, one of the open houses, one of the property owners that butts the core area, wants to actually be included in the core area. Do we know whether that change has been made? It was one, it was a single-family house operating. They saw, not Cherrydale.
Cherrydale.
Not Cherrydale, no, it wasn't Cherry.
I think Natasha's on the line, if maybe she can.
You think that change was made?
I think Natasha's on the line, if she can answer that question.
And Natasha, you know the one I'm talking about.
There were a few, Jim, that we talked through, and the ones that you pointed out, you and, and others at the LBA that, that you pointed out were included, for sure.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I need to know. Thanks, Natasha.
No problem.
I have a similar clarification question on maps and sort of the outlines of the heights and how you sort of implement that. Like, let's say, you know, half of a property is on like a ten-story and the other half is on a seven-story. Where do you, like, you know, how do you arbitrate that line when push comes to shove?
Natasha's.
So happy, happy to answer that. So we have very specific recommendations for step backs, depending on whether you're adjacent or across the street from low-density residential edges. And those step backs, there are setbacks, of course, right, for the ground floor and, and for the podium part of the building, but the step backs are also very specific in the guidelines. So really, when you're looking at a site, you have to look at the overall dimensions of the site, and as long as the, the building conforms to the, to the step back requirements, we're just going to be looking at those dimensions specifically for a site, and making sure that, that the building follows the minimum distances that are prescribed there.
I think I understand. So you're saying that, like, the map is illustrated, and at the end of the day, it's, it's more about like streets and setbacks from.
Right, so the maps are just illustrating the general height zones, and for the most part, they, they follow the step backs, but you know, some sites are more, they're just a little bit more like unique, let's just say, so the recommendations provide more clarity to that. So if you have a site that's, let's say, two hundred feet, as long as your building is set back, if it's a budding, it's one, it's one distance, if it's across the street, it's a different distance, and so it really depends on whether you're budding across the street from a low-density residential edge, or if, if not, and, and there are very specific recommendations for each of those conditions.
Yes, just to add to that, some of that additional guidance in the text is in chapter four, in our guidance, our guidelines, excuse me. So the, the map is a visual, and then that's supplemented with some, some guidelines in chapter four.
Perfect, thank you, thank you both. I think the scenario that I had in mind was like this very skinny little sliver that ends up being like a, a much higher height, you know, given sort of lot widths or something, and so I was just wondering how we would navigate that, but I think this is very helpful.
Well, if, if the site cannot accommodate a, a functional floor in the zone that we've, let's say, allocated for ten stories or, or higher, then, then they just won't be able to, to accommodate that.
Okay, that's also very good. Thank you.
Oh, one additional thing, we're now creating a corridor the way we did for Roslin-Boston and for Richmond Highway. So it does include Cherrydale and East Falls Church. So we will essentially be from North Highlands to East Falls Church, all five of the areas will then be defined as that corridor.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll follow up on that. So first of all, it's been there all along, we're finally recognizing it. But can you sort of explain a little bit why we're calling it an area and not a corridor? I think there was something on the presentation that we're not calling it a corridor.
It will be identified as a planning corridor on the back of the general lean's plan.
Okay.
For consistency with the rest of the corridors, the Roslin-Boston corridor. The plan itself is being called the Langston Boulevard area plan, and I don't know if, I think that's pretty common for how we've named plans in areas where we weren't otherwise specifically calling for a revitalization plan. And then also, we've reserved the term sector plan for those stations specifically at metro stations.
I see, okay.
So, so this area plan will comprise of the three un, currently unplanned areas of the corridor. The, the North Highlands area, the, then the other two to the, between Cherrydale and East Falls Church. Okay, good.
Right, and again, because we have adopted policy in place for those other two areas.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I think I, you answered my question.
No, I, you know, other than just to say again, because there's only three of us here, but, you know, the explanation of how this works as far as the club, I think, be needed for our colleagues, because I, I certainly was getting tripped up here, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, the, the stat, the, the, the plan draft, the draft plan that comes forward for the RTA and the staff report will clarify the approach. Even more so than what we're indicating. Able to say tonight, yes, yes, yes.
But I wouldn't be surprised if, if planning commission.
Yeah.
Things we talked about here are raised yet again.
Right, right, right. That's what I looked to Jim to.
Yeah, I think that's good, and then this is coming before the planning commission in October.
The request to advertise. And then, yeah, at the end of October, first of November for final action. As we do the request to advertise first, and then we'll come back for your final recommendation that would go to the board for final action. So that would be for your meeting associated with the November county board meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Want to see any other comments? Do we have any public speakers that signed up? And then how do we do, we do digital first or chat? Oh, right. Is Katie Wenger? You have two.
Wagner, Wenger, Wang, Wang, sorry.
All right, you have two minutes.
Awesome, thank you, thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Katie Wenger, and I'm a member of the Housing Commission, but tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Voice. Voice is an interfaith community organization that advocates for social justice issues in Northern Virginia. And we've done many listening sessions among community members who are burdened by the unaffordable cost of housing in Arlington, especially families of color and immigrants, and many are being forced to pick up and move to other areas or paying unsustainably high percentages of their incomes on rent. In fact, according to a new report, over fifty percent of residents of South Arlington struggle to meet basic needs like housing and food. These issues are also affecting teachers, healthcare workers, and other essential workers. So it is critical that the county act now to address the severe shortage of affordable housing in Arlington, to prevent further displacement and to promote equity. Plan Langston Boulevard is a major opportunity to do this, and we are supportive of the overall goals of the draft plan, but the current draft plan falls short of achieving these goals. So the county must revise the plan to align with the Affordable Housing Master Plan by ensuring that twenty-five hundred committed affordable units are included along Langston Boulevard. These units must be committed affordable to households under sixty percent of the area mean income, because market rate affordable units are likely to disappear over the years. There are several ways to achieve this goal. The first is by allowing higher density, which will promote more affordable units through the site plan and bonus density process. I mean, also lowers housing costs overall. So we encourage that the recommended maximum heights be increased. There's also ways, other ways to do this, which I didn't have time to cover, but thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. Alice Hogan?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Alice Hogan, I am with the Alliance for Housing Solutions. We have been following this plan for several years, and a huge shout out to so many staff members who have brought this plan to where it is today, and, and will guide it to its fruition. We commend the vision that is here, inclusivity, sustainability, equity, crucial elements for the future of Arlington, and that are, you know, part of this plan that was really bringing in community ideas and feedback. We know we need tens of thousands of additional housing units in Arlington, so this corridor is crucial to help us realize the, that, to fill that gap. This is a bland, a bold plan for the next fifty years, so we need to keep it as open and flexible as possible, because we don't even know what we will need then, but we certainly know we need a lot of intentional development, mostly in the housing realm. And if we provide that flexibility and, and maximum potential for capacity along the corridor, we know that is the way that affordable units will be able to be produced within this range of, of thousands of units. As the previous speaker said, we're looking for a minimum of twenty-five hundred cabs among those new housing units. That will not even meet the needs, these needs are reflective of data from twenty thirteen, so it is an absolute. East Falls Church and Cherrydale are crucial to bringing this total, and we need the county to commit to reviewing and bringing those two plans into alignment immediately, not in five years. To think of where you can get from EFC to, you know, Dulles, National, Greenbelt, you name it, and we have a parking lot there is just unfathomable. So I encourage you to encourage staff and, and the board to consider as many tools as possible to help us achieve as much housing as we can on the corridor, and thank you this, for having me this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. All right, I have three names on the list for speakers here. All right, I will start with Ms. Alice Tull.
Hi, can I, can I go ahead?
Yeah, two minutes.
Sure, I, I'm Alice Tull, I'm the pastor at Claret and Presbyterian Church, and I live in Barcraft. And where I, I live in Barcraft, and so many of my kids' friends, they live in apartments that are too tight, and they either have to move somewhere else, out, way out, or into Maryland, or into DC, or they have to jam so many families and so many kids into a single apartment. Kids sharing beds and bunks, and it is unsafe, and it is a terrible way to live. But families love Arlington, and they love the good work opportunities, and they love the good schools, and we need more cabs, we need twenty-five minute, twenty-five hundred minimum. And I look at the great schools that are on Langston Boulevard, Williamsburg just got an award, a Blue Ribbon Award, and we need more units there for, for families to live. I remember when they were moving families out of the Serrano, because the conditions were so terrible, there was no place to move families. And then we look at our seniors, and seniors need housing too, they're most rapidly growing segment. And then in my congregation, I'm losing young adults because they're moving somewhere else because the rent is too high, and they may not be in committed cabs, but they need more, they need more housing in Arlington. Thank you, and I really commend the staff's work on all of it.
Great, thank you, Ms. Tull. Having a little bit of a hard time reading this. Ms. Jolie?
That's me, the, the fourth.
No, sorry, sorry. All right, two minutes.
Hi, I'm Jolie Pillsbury, and we live in that little corner of the corridor that's right abutting, what many of you know as the former area, Key Bridge area. And I would like to really, really thank the staff who have listened to us and talked and engaged us and educated us, and been responsive to our interest in having more new neighbors, you know. But in a way that sustains the livability and in many ways the affordability of that particular corner of Boulevard. It is our understanding that currently we sort of meet the density and the affordability and even the diversity goals that are the vision of the plan in that little corner. And our big concern is that because that land is so precious, the development that occurs there will not create affordable housing. It will actually push out the affordable housing that already exists in that corner. So we believe from a long-range planning commission perspective, there might be an opportunity to combine the goals of sustainability with the goal of affordability. For example, we know that the county has not invested or created incentives to transform existing buildings into either residential or other purposes, because it, the environmental impact of taking an existing good structure and not completely demolishing it and rebuilding it, that environmental impact is less than completely destroying and building a new. And I truly am requesting that the Long Range Planning Commission consider, as one of their recommendations, that if you're looking into the long-range future, you consider that sustainability has many different elements. Last thing I would like to say is that we believe access to nature is important for all families and the mental health of people of all ages. Our little tiny strange part of Roslyn, which we love, actually has access that is being provided by our private paths that get me to the public land.
Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury, once again. And then the last speaker, Mr. Aaron Roberts?
Hi, Aaron Roberts, I'm just going to echo a little bit of what Jolie already shared, I, I agree one hundred percent. Our neighborhood supports everything about the plan Langston Boulevard vision. This, this entire corridor will grow, and it should grow, and I hope that a lot of that growth will, will seed affordable housing. I think the only concern that we've had consistently is, is a question of proportionality, and on that topic, I'm. And on that topic, I'm very impressed by the intimations and directions that we've seen from county staff. A return to, I think, the implicit wisdom of the preliminary concept plan from summer of 2022. And I, I would also like to commend staff and also recommend the, the planning commission that a special attention be given to the step back and setback guidelines from the, the draft final plan. Those are especially useful, especially as new development is considered along low-density residential edges. So just to conclude, want to thank everyone for their time and the vision and all the hard work. You know, it's tireless and sometimes feels thankless, but I'm here thanking all of you for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's all the public speakers we have. I'm seeing anyone else. See, I don't think there's any next steps, right? This is it for Zoka today. This is coming from the planning commissioners. Just covered that. I'm forgetting already. So that's it. Well, thanks everyone for coming out to the meeting today. Thanks staff for the great presentation, for the great work. Thanks, John West, for the earlier L R P C section. That was very good. And with that, have a good night, everyone.